Ladies and gentlemen, do welcome to the next episode of my Safe Bet Show. And it gives me a great pleasure and of course is a privilege to welcome Marlene Warner, the CEO of the Massachusetts Council on Gaming and Health on the show. Welcome, Marlene. It's great to have you.
It's so lovely to be here. Thank you, Martin.
Well, let me delve right into it because I will spill the beans and tell the audience that Marlene and I have just discussed that there's quite a few questions to get through and we only tend to have half an hour. So let's get on with it. Marlene and I, well, we've done, it's always been my pleasure, not sure whether it might be dubious pleasure at Marlene's end, we've done quite a few panels together. And last time, for the first time perhaps, I may have incurred some wrath at Marlene's aunt because I dare suggest that her accent was a Massachusetts one. And she stared me down and goes, no, it's, it's not. But you know, here's the question. You've been a very popular figure up and down the industry. And I would suggest that lots of the folks in the industry associate you for obvious reasons with the great Bay State of Massachusetts. But indeed, as I've said, you don't come from there. So could you clarify that for us, please?
Sure. That's right. I actually forgotten that piece around the panel. So yeah, I came to Massachusetts in 2001. My husband is originally from here, so we moved back to your, back here. But I was born in, in New York, went to high school in Pennsylvania, went to college in Pennsylvania and found my way via Washington DC for four and a half years up to Massachusetts. So I'm not originally from Massachusetts, but I've lived here longer than anywhere else. So I certainly call it my home.
Cool. Well, as you know, it's my spiritual home for many reasons. Okay, so we've done the walk to Massachusetts and let's talk about your education, if we may. The Gettysburg College and the George Washington University. You hold a BA degree in sociology from the Gettysburg College and an MA in Women's Studies and Communications from good old George Washington. So what caught my, well, many things caught my eye on your LinkedIn profile. But in connection with this question was the mention of the Student Senate that you were part of at Gettysburg. So here's the second question. Have you ever aspired to be a politician or am I just making it all up?
First of all, I have to go back and look at my LinkedIn profile. If something is on there from Gettysburg College students and it cracks me up that that's there. I don't know how that ended up there. But anyway. So here's funny thing, Martin. In high school, I was student senate president and the student council president. In college, I was the student senate president. Your timing is impeccable as always, Martin. Because literally today, literally today, I am pulling papers to run for our city councillor position in my ward. So your timing is spot on. And I aspire to always work to better the community I'm in. I don't know if I have grand aspirations, but I think in terms of holding a leadership position where I am, yes, that is actually something I'm doing as we speak.
Awesome. You certainly have a halo above your hat, which you fully deserve. And hopefully it will help in the, in the election we'll be crossing our fingers. So well, you're sort of a politician, watch out for Marlene, Jonathan. Ultimately, a few years from now, but if you pardon the pun, I do believe that your George Washington farewell address is many, many years away. But would there have been a speech or a lecture you would have already given in your career that you would consider your Gettysburg address?
Such a good question. Um, you know, I'd say that the hardest, I don't know if it was my Gettysburg address because I don't know how much wisdom I imparted on people. And you know, if you go to Gettysburg College, you kind of, you know, the spot where Lincoln stood and you know, it's so much about the Gettysburg address. So I hold it, you know, in high regard. But I'd say that the speech that took me the longest and I spent the most time really thinking about its impact was when two summers ago at the National Council on Problem Gambling, I was really honored to receive the National Council on Problem Gambling's Lifetime Achievement Award in advocacy. And so when you do that, I, I actually won it two, three years ago. But when you do win it, then the following year you offer a keynote address. And so I offered that keynote in Washington DC. And you know, trying to encapsulate everything you've done and why you've done it and the people that have brought you to that spot, I think is, it's a little overwhelming. So I've now received two lifetime achievement awards. I also received, I was, it was very kind, the Connecticut Council gave me one years ago. I think they're trying to tell me to get out of the field. But um, yeah, I'd say that, that, that DC one is, is most like my Gettysburg address.
Are both very well deserved. We won't be talking about the times gone by, force course, and some years ago. Let's talk about more recent past. So finally, now you'll be pleased to hear on a more serious note. So you've got those degrees I've alluded to. Did you, and I'm sure you did, put them to a very good use in your subsequent roles, especially at the Massachusetts Council. So the question is, how did you do that? How did you use those, the skills that you obtained throughout your education? When you joined the brave world of, I suppose, real life and having a job and whatnot?
Yeah. So you know, it's never a straight line and it is, you know, nobody grows up and says they want to work in advocacy in the gambling field, right? Like, nobody knows what that looks like. But I'd say sociology has really helped me to study people. That's the whole concept of sociology and understand the details of what makes people connect. What, what drives people and using data to be able to help get us there? That's literally my job today, right? Like, and then we can talk more about that. And then in terms of women's studies, I mean, what's interesting is I was at American University in admissions. I left Gettysburg with this degree in sociology, but I had taken a lot of political science classes. And my first job out of college was to go and work for the Democratic Caucus in the House, Congress. And I got, I am the worst person with directions. I got lost every single day and I had blisters on my feet. And after like three months, I was like, I can't do this anymore. There was, you make no money. I was out of there. So I went to work at American and what I basically, and I had done admissions work at Gettysburg. So I basically said to myself, you know, you really need an advanced degree. And I decided I was either going to go to law school or he's going to get a women's studies degree. And luckily for me, I know I'm speaking to an attorney here, but luckily for me, I, I went to the route of women's studies. And what was amazing about that program was first program in the nation was understanding how you represent an underserved population, understudied population, and the connections to modern day. And so this, this comms piece was not by mistake. I really wanted to mix those two. Simultaneously, while I was working there, I mean, while I was studying there, I worked at the National Breast Cancer Coalition. And I think that was really the foundation for me seeing how you could offer services, but also do some really strong advocacy. And you know, their kind of mantra in the office was go beyond the pink ribbon, do something beyond that, go and fight for what you really need. And that laid a really strong foundation. So it was after my master's degree in women's studies, but also this pretty informative time at the National Breast Cancer Coalition, then I came up to Massachusetts again with my husband and was just looking for nonprofit work. And when I came in, Kathy Scanlon, my, the executive director at the time and my boss, I came in first as program director, said to me, you understand advocacy, you understand nonprofit administration, I'll teach you about gambling. And between her and Dr. Howard Schaefer and a number of other folks, I really started to learn gambling. So fast forward 24 years, I still think I'm using those degrees today. I'm still using those degrees and those experiences in a way that is, is pushing us towards advocacy, using evidence to connect people and understand the way people live and play and work and connecting, you know, services to that.
That's clearly a division of labor. Women's studies and I did law, to my shame. It's all unwitting and benefit of the hindsight. But moving on to the Massachusetts Council, as I've said, your current job title is the CEO, the one at the very top of the Massachusetts Council on Gaming and Health. But previously you guys used to be called the Massachusetts Council on Compulsive Gambling. So what caused, what occasioned that name change? And what you guys were after when you were changing the name of the council? Because please correct me if I'm wrong, but still looking at the nation as a whole, it is quite rare. Most of the councils, the names refer to gambling addiction, problem gambling, compulsive gambling.
Yeah. Yeah. So in 2001, when I came in, we basically did a lot of great work, but we waited for people to come to us. We waited for people to call the helpline. We waited for people to show up at the table that we were sending materials out. We, we were really informed, but we waited for people to receive that message. Fast forward to the 2011 Expanded Gaming Act in Massachusetts, us standing at the GameSense program here, which I know we'll get a chance to talk about a little later. And now we are where people are gambling and we are representing and offering services from primary prevention through long-term recovery. It no longer represented the, we can debate the, the numbers, but the 1% to 2% of people who struggled with the problem, we were representing the entire spectrum when someone made the choice to gamble, even prior to that, because primary prevention is before you're even old enough to make that choice. So it didn't, Council on Compulsive Gambling did not represent this, this spectrum. So that was the first thing. We wanted to really focus on everything, not just compulsive gambling. Two is that health really means something much broader than just looking at a disorder. And so we wanted to talk again, back to my sociology degree. We wanted to talk about how this issue interfaces with how people work, play, live. And so the healthy part or the player health piece that we focus on is much broader than, again, just this one disorder piece. And then, you know, we had fought the fight for a long time about calling it gambling versus gaming. And I have to say, at some point, I and in turn my board kind of gave up on that and said, let's just call it what the Massachusetts Council, I mean, the Massachusetts Gaming Commission calls it. It's gaming. All the statutes and regulations call it in Massachusetts gaming. And the other thing that allowed us to do by calling it gaming and health is that we were able to talk about gaming such as it is in gambling, but also gaming as it relates to video gaming. And we were seeing so much intersection between the two issues. And we're starting to do a lot more work in the video gaming space that we wanted that to be there. So it was really intentional. We do work in a number of other states. At this point, we kind of regret calling it Massachusetts, which we can talk about later. But yeah, that was the transition from compulsive gambling to gaming and health.
New England and other fellow states, I'd suggest, and clearly a council by the people and for the people. But let's talk about the programs like GameSense right now, because you've kindly helped me with that segue. So what are the flagship programs of the future aspiring New England Council on Gaming and Health? And to the extent you're allowed to tell me and the audience, what is it you guys have in store for us? Is there anything you could announce right here, right now, or perhaps at least allude to?
So I'd say that, you know, GameSense continues to, to be our number one biggest thing. And for folks who don't know what GameSense is, we are offering services onsite at the casinos and directly connecting with sports bettors via the apps. And so we have this huge team via a grant that, a contract we have with the Massachusetts Gaming Commission, but it's required by law, by the statute, called GameSense Advisors. And GameSense is simply a brand and it's licensed from the British Columbia Lottery Corporation. But 24 hours a day, seven days a week, you can talk to a live person. And I think in the, in the culture that we're in right now, where everything's meant to be solved by AI and, and technology, while I think there's a lot of huge advancements and opportunities there, we still have to connect to human beings. And so our GameSense advisors are able to connect with people, whether that's learning how to play a game, not win a game at a game, but understand the rules, understand the house edge, all of those details, all the way through being able to self-exclude. And they do all the voluntary self-exclusions in Massachusetts. Our GameSense advisors are there. So that's huge. We do a lot of interaction. We go to where people are. So we are dealing with the operators, the regulators connecting. So GameSense is a huge piece of what we do. But I would also say that we are spending a lot of time thinking about vulnerable population or at-risk populations and doing that via research. So we're spending a lot of time around youth right now. We have a grant through the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office and the Youth Sports Betting Safety Coalition and trying to not just do a curriculum that you go and stand in front of a group of kids and deliver because they don't care. I have a 19 and 17 year old. They don't care. They don't, they don't want you to just blob on about them. So we're trying to do something much more innovative and I don't have, I can't exactly disclose what that is yet, but we are working on the content. And then I'd say in general, it's advocacy. And so whether that's advocacy in terms of the right tools that are out there, national voluntary self-exclusion is a huge passion of mine. Really talking to operators or regulators about how to incorporate research. There's a lot of things that we're, that are, that we're currently doing.
It's coming. It's coming. And I'm sure Marlene will keep us posted. I'm now desperately trying to avoid an element of confusion because we're about to move on to talk about the National Council. But it's the National Council on Problem Gambling. But largely, I would suggest that nationwide, the focus is, if not the same, then very similar. And this show has had the absolute pleasure to host numerous leaders from within the industry, like yourself, that have been affiliated with the, with the NCPG and that program. I would really love to get your personal take on it and the impact it has had on the US gambling industry as a whole and at wide, but in particular sense, legalization of sports betting.
I think that we cannot overstate the impact that NCPG has had on this field. When their executive director previously was Keith White and he and his board of directors would put out a frame of reference in terms of what should sports betting companies think about? Or what should internet gambling, just generally internet gambling companies think about? When they think about responsible gambling or problem gambling? And offer a number of content areas to think about, offer certifications. Those are enormous. So that alone has changed the field dramatically. I would also say that we have had great leadership from them in terms of the, the Grit Act and other advocacy efforts. And so what happens in the federal level certainly continues to be replicated on the state level. And then I just would say the training piece. I mean, they are such a convener of this field at that conference annually, that that's how people get connected. That's how people get trained. So I think NCPG has been monumental to, to the growth and advancement of this field.
Here, here, on a slightly more joking note, I suppose, if one day you do become the chairperson of the Federal Senate, then that may help the Grit Act. So fingers crossed yet again. But I'd be really remiss in my duties to you and the industry if I didn't ask about, well, I know it's yours, it's mine, but it's just about everybody's pet hate, namely the national helpline. Where are we with that? It's getting more and more national, but I dare say it's not yet nationwide. Now going back to a very brief of the panel, we did at Seton Hall together, you know, 1-800-GAMBLER, this side of River Hudson, and they got hope in New York City. Perhaps not the next, but the city's got some hope. But the numbers, that's the point, are different. So what is it? What else is there? We can't do to finally get it done.
Oh, Martin, this is my biggest, one of my biggest pet peeves. I've got a couple of them. But um, yeah, we need to, the biggest blockers are the states. And so it's either the state administrators, the state administrator of, of health, or it's the council that who's holding on to their number because they feel like it's more recognizable. And while I totally understand that and appreciate that, we're doing a disservice. And I think if nothing else, as advocates and service providers in this field, we need to eliminate barriers. We need to eliminate barriers. The largest barrier we are putting in people's way right now is not having one single number. One single number is the thing that we need to do. Next would be to, to unify treatment and voluntary self-exclusion. But the, the pathway there is the helpline. So we've got to do this. And I think NCPG frankly has to step up, do a lot more work in terms of connecting to the key organizations and companies through their membership base, frankly. They have the right resources. They just got to pull it together and push that out. But yes, you and I have had quite a few conversations about this.
Absolutely. They've always been very enjoyable and hopefully one day we'll get where we do need to get. But it's yet another segue into talking about, that's the generic question, if you will. RG in America, da, 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 da. The two of us, as I keep saying, we've done countless panels, given speeches, written pieces, opinion pieces and whatnot on RG in America. So I presume that you would have faced just about every imaginable, if not even unimaginable, questions. But there are out there about responsible gambling in this country. But let me ask you one orthodox one and then right on the heels of it, what might be a rather unorthodox one. So what are your views on the current state of play in this space? What, what is it we've done really well and what is it where we may have let ourselves down at least a bit?
So again, I think that we are at a spot where everyone's at the table. That's the great news, right? And we are no longer waiting for people to hit rock bottom. I think the goal is for us to, at least the conversations are about intervening with play earlier and in a more customized way. How that happens and when that happens and what is the best message, we still don't know. It's still not clear. And I was just on a panel yesterday with the AGA and talking to Lori Colani from DraftKings. And, and we were talking afterwards about like needing the research that's going to pinpoint what is the customized message that a sports better needs versus somebody who is in a casino versus somebody who's a lottery player. And PS, some people play all three. And so how do we, how do we get the right messaging? And I think, you know, the likes of Dr. Michael Wall and, and many others are really trying to pinpoint what is working and what's not. And how do we get the uptake of some of these messages in these, in these tools? Because I think that's one of the downfalls. A lot of, a lot of operators and regulators have put out messages and they've put out tools, but they haven't made sure they're working and they haven't used the feedback loop to go back and fix them. And I think that's where we're at right now. I guess the other thing I'd say is that we can't forget, and I, this is kind of, I don't know that you and I've talked about this before, Martin, but to me, we can't forget lottery play. Like, and this is me from Massachusetts that has the most profitable lottery and per capita in the world. But lottery play, I feel like, it feels like old school and everyone's moved on. Lottery play still generates so much more money and has so many more problematic players than kind of all the other forms combined. And so I think we are doing a disservice to people who struggle with gambling, certainly in the Commonwealth, if we're not paying attention to lottery play and figuring out how do we connect with players in such an anonymous world? And I think that's one of the things I'm also focused on.
And that's needless to say, extremely important point because including on the regulatory side of things, lotteries get, may want to call it brushed aside or put in their little silo. Well, they're sort of part of this space, but they're not. And that's yet another great segue. Thank you very much. Because here comes the question that is normally asked the other way around. So I will turn it on its hat. Because do you think the other industries that typically, a lot of folks out there put forth as an example for us, like alcohol, tobacco, to some extent cannabis? Do they have anything or thing or two to learn from us as the gambling industry? Maybe a leading question. What's your take on that one?
I mean, I think cannabis still has a ways to go. I don't, I'm not exactly holding them up as a model. I mean, alcohol and tobacco, I think there's a lot more alcohol, I mean, excuse me, a lot more advertisement restrictions. And I think they've, they've been through what we're currently going through as a field and trying to assess what's appropriate, what's not appropriate. I'd also say that, you know, tips training, it's just something everyone has totally accepted and is universal. We don't have universal training in, in the casino world. We don't have universal training in sports betting. Everyone's trying to figure it out on their own. And you know, when you think about the various products in gambling, but also that you have tribal versus commercial, there's just vast differences. And I think we need to bring a lot more standards to this space. I'd say that's probably advertising and standards are the two biggest pieces, I'd say, that we could pull from tobacco and alcohol.
We've been extremely efficient today. So here's a bonus question for you. Conference panels, you're seasoned, if not bottle hardened, and most definitely well-respected panelist. So throughout the years of you having done all those panels, what would be one the silliest, oh, I'll behave, so perhaps the most bizarre question you would have been asked on a panel? Hopefully none of the questions on this show, but feel free. And which one would have been or was the most gratifying, where you really thought, yeah, that's a great question, because that lets me talk about a topic that is very close to my heart.
You know, I, I'm not sure that I've had a silly panel. I'd say that I feel like I've, I've had a lot of repeats. You probably bring the most color to the panels. It's, it's Hall, Martin. I'd say that that's, you know, I wouldn't call them silly. I'd call them more fun. And you know, people often ask what my hopes and dreams are. And I, and you know, that's not just been a one panel. It's been on multiple. But I mean, it's funny. I remember asking this question, being, asking this question of the people who are interviewing me when I went to the National Breast Cancer Coalition. And they said, our hopes and dreams in 10 years would be to eradicate breast cancer. And I kind of think that every time that somebody asks me that question on panel, like what I'd love is to never have to talk about gambling problems again. I'd love for people to just be able to use this as a form of entertainment and never have a problem. Fairly unlikely, but I guess that's always, I'm always kind of like stuck on that question and feel like it's maybe a little silly and a little hard to answer. So.
Well, we're coming on to the home straight of this podcast. So Marlene, you've already won two life achievement titles. Because normally I tell my guests, it's your time to fully cement your place in the Hall of Fame. Perhaps the AGA one or the SBC one, take your pick. But now you've got your 60 seconds, please, to convey your key messages.
Well, thank you again, Martin. I appreciate this time. I always enjoy talking with you. And you know, I guess I would just want to say to anyone who's listening that everyone can make a difference in this field. I think a lot of people kind of wait to decide how they can be involved. Even if you don't have responsibilities for player health in your job description, you can, you can help by just promoting the helpline. We talked about the 1-800-GAMBLER. I think that's a really key piece. I'd say that this field is moving rapidly, both because of expansion of gambling, but also because we see this gray area and you know, some of the areas that's currently gray gaming, I will assume in, you know, six, 10 years, maybe even way sooner, will become legalized gambling. And I think that the key piece is that it hurts no one and it certainly does not hurt business for us to be able to put the right safeguards in place. And that, again, eliminating barriers is what we should all be looking forward to. The people who make the choice to gamble don't care about the jurisdictional lines. They don't care about the operator versus regulator. They want people that can connect with help and they want someone to look, look at the data, both their own data and the data across the field and help them figure out how do they measure up against the norm and what is right for them? So like we do in nutrition and other areas, let's, you know, put out the right framework for people to make a good decision as it relates to gambling and for the operators and regulators to put the right pieces in place.
Thank you very much, Marlene. Ladies and gentlemen, this has been Marlene Warner, the CEO of the Mass Council on Gaming and Health, born New Yorker, but one of the greatest champions of the Bay State of Massachusetts I have ever met. My name is Martin Litschka. I wasn't born in New York City. My younger daughter was, but I'm trying to be a champion of Massachusetts as well. This has been the latest episode of my Safe Bet Show. Thank you very much and I'll see you next time.